Okay, calling to order the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education meeting on September 1st. Roll call please.
Armenta, Hale.
Here.
Hauptman.
Here.
Candela.
Here.
Kwan, here.
Lozada.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. If you have a public comment this evening, please type that in the Q and A box in the chat and we will read that into the meeting. Give you a minute or two to be able to do that. Okay, I don't see any public comments. Eric, do you see anything?
You're unmuted. Yes, as I shared earlier, there are no public comments.
Okay, so there being no public comments, we will move on to presentations.
I'm sorry, Jor, are we doing the special meeting where we're just going to take action on the resolution to adopt the e-learning?
Um, perhaps I'm not, oh, I'm sorry, I clicked on the wrong link in board book.
That's okay.
Yes, we will do that meeting.
Okay, it's okay, it started out the exact same way, we just have to read that resolution.
Sure.
And then adopt it and then we can go into the regular meeting.
Perfect, give me one second, I am not adept at the new board book at all.
No, no problem at all, and while Mrs. Hale is doing that, I'm just gonna share for the benefit of the attendees who are here tonight. In lieu of adopting like a formal calendar, we've always done, it passes, if you were doing an e-learning plan and that's what you were adopting for emergency days throughout the state, then you had to have the board formally adopt a e-learning plan because we were doing things electronically or remotely. So in lieu of that, we are just doing this because we are in an emergency situation. And so this is the plan that we had presented to the board on August 4th, so it has been adopted as well as publicized and we've worked with the planning for a task force as well as members of our union in as far as collaborating, putting things together. And there are some, some things that we're continuing to discuss with staff as well as with our union and we'll, you know, apprise you of those if they change. But right now, that's the purpose of this resolution is to make sure that we have a electronic learning format on record with the Regional Office of Education.
Now I found that, so thank you, so we will, we will be reading the resolution and then moving to adapt it this evening. And then after that, essentially this meeting got concluded, we'll move on to the rest of the business. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas the Board of Education of Diamond Lake School District 76 is adopting an e-learning program district-wide that shall permit student instruction to be received electronically while students are not physically present in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Diamond Lake School District 76 that will employ an e-learning program that may utilize the internet, telephones, texts, chat rooms, or other similar means of electronic communication for instruction and interaction between teachers and students that meet the needs of all learners. Ensures and verifies that required clock hours of instruction or schoolwork for each student participating in an e-learning day. Ensures access from home or other appropriate remote facility for all students participating in the program, including availability of non-electronic materials to students who do not have access to required technology. Ensures appropriate learning opportunities for students with special needs. Ensures the monitoring and verification of each student's electronic participation. Addresses the extent to which student participation is within the student's control as to the time, pace, and means of learning. Provides effective notice to students and their parents or guardians at the particular days for e-learning. Provides staff and students with adequate training for e-learning days participation. Ensures an opportunity for collective bargaining negotiations that would be legally required. Reviews the program as implemented to address difficulties confronted through revision or otherwise. Ensures that the protocol regarding general expectations and responsibilities of the program is communicated to teachers, staff, students, and parents at least 30 days prior to utilization. Ensures all teachers and staff who may be involved in the provision of e-learning have access to any and all hardware and software that may be required for the program. Will be verified by the Regional Office of Education for the school district to ensure access for all students. Will be implemented for a period of three years, 2019 through 20, 2020 through 21, and 2021 through 22 prior to renewal. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Lozada.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Armenta, Hale.
Yes.
Hauptman.
Yes.
Candela.
Yes.
Kwan, yes.
Okay, so that includes the business agenda for the special meeting. And we will now move on to board discussion, I am assuming that we don't have any. Okay, and now we will open the floor for public comments on petitions on non-agenda items for this meeting. Again, you can type those in the chat box. I am not seeing any and obviously you'll have the opportunity to also ask them in the regular meeting, which will begin in just a minute. So now I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Candela.
Yes.
Lozada.
Yes.
Armenta, Hale.
Yes.
Hauptman.
Yes.
Kwan, yes.
Sullivan. Yeah.
Okay, and that adjourns our special meeting for the evening. And we're now calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Margaret, can I ask you to do roll call again, please?
Yes, Armenta, Hale.
Yes.
Hauptman.
Yes.
Candela.
Yes.
Kwan.
Here.
Yes. Lozada.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Okay, and now we open this meeting to public comments on agenda items, do we have any public comments this evening?
No.
Okay, then we will move on now to presentations, here we go.
Great, thank you, we do presentations this evening, I'm gonna ask members of the district leadership team to help me present to you all tonight and I'm gonna ask Mr. Hanson if he would please share his screen with the presentations. The first one is an update on the Facilitated Distance Learning Academy. And even though we are in day two, we just wanted to give the board and the community an update of what it looks like, how it's going, what just the current status is. And then give you an opportunity to ask questions and for you to see it, so. Like I said, we started it yesterday was our first day to actually have students in and I'm really proud to say that we are one of the few districts in Lake County and actually throughout the state that are providing this, so I want to thank the board for their support for that as well as for our learning associates who are working with, supporting and supervising our students and their, the principals, Mr. Rogers and his team for facilitating and the leadership of coordinating all the maintenance, the sanitation, the room usage and all the logistics around it. So as we go through it, if we can go to slide one. This is just a summary of the details of the program, so right now we have 32 students who are in true facilitated distance learning and how students and families were selected for this is that there was an application process. So if there was a hardship or if there was a childcare need that families needed, then they were, they filled out an application and then submitted it to us and we were fortunate to be able to allow everyone to come in due to space and we had the staff available to do so. Then we also were able to accommodate eight students with IEPs, so that's in addition to the 32 students that are in just for facilitated distance learning. So we have a total of 40 students, 13 at Diamond Lake and three of those are the additional ones with IEPs. West Oak Intermediate has 10 in facilitated distance learning and West Oak Middle School has nine with an additional five who have IEPs. Our staff, as I shared earlier, are paraprofessionals who don't have direct teaching responsibilities but are able to supervise and facilitate and support those students who are in classes with their classroom teacher who are facilitating or presenting the remote learning from a different location. And then they're here in one of our classrooms being supervised by our staff. So we have eight paraprofessionals who are supporting the 32 students and that's a nice way of having, you know, one to every, I'm doing my math real quick, one to every six students, let's just say, five students and then we have one assistant who rotates to give those other assistants breaks. And then we also have five paraprofessionals who are working with students with IEPs in a one-to-one capacity based on their IEP needs or their learning needs. And then we also have Mrs. Marchese who is onsite as our school nurse. Transportation of the 32 students, I should say of the 40, we have 28 students who are on transportation or are using our transportation, I'd say, so one bus. We're still working on a couple of glitches with that as far as the routes and timings and that's just pretty typical of, you know, the first couple of weeks of school. So we're gonna continue to work with Durham on solidifying the routes, making them more efficient, making sure that cleaning in between the routes can be done, you know, expediently so we can get the students here on time and then they can have breakfast and get classes started when the teachers start at the start of the school day. We're providing breakfast and lunch at no cost to our families and mask breaks are built in as students need them and as natural breaks are happening within the classroom. I am going to turn it over to Mr. Rogers who's gonna kind of share with you what the building layout and what rooms are being used and how we're kind of maintaining social distancing, so Mr. Rogers, next slide please.
Thank you, this just gives you a little bit of a representation of what our building looks like. Now, the yellow rooms that are highlighted are rooms that teachers may be using their, their rooms for remote teaching purposes. And we're happy that teachers are utilizing our building and our resources for those teaching needs. Some teachers may be in one day a week, some may be in all five, but at least we've provided that, you know, them a safe and comfortable space to be teaching from their classroom. And then the, the two green spaces are highlighting where students are currently housed. So we have our special ed students that are in room 21 that's right off the library. And then we've decided to use the Innovation Center as our primary facilitated distance learning spot just based on the fact that it's been newly renovated, it's light, it's bright, it's got a lot of space for students to, to move around. And also there's a maker space that's adjacent that provides a nice, nice area for facilitated learning. So students have easy access to the playground and most importantly, it kind of gives them a little bit of moveability, I guess, mobility around their, their space, they don't have to sit in the same classroom the entire day. So if you go to what, West Oak is very, yeah, West Oak's very similar, same principles apply with teachers are utilizing their spaces. We are using room 26, which is at the very bottom in green, that's where special ed students are gonna be housed. And we also have adjacent to that are special ed teachers and their little resource breakout rooms and also our social worker Lindsay Harmon that's in room adjacent to that special ed location as well. So we decided to use the library as well because the, the furniture, the mobility that we have, the fact that we have outlets scattered throughout the space. Students are gonna be in the classrooms to the north of the library in rooms five and eight. So we have room five has got West Oak Middle School and then room eight has got West Oak Intermediate. So we were able to socially distance students appropriately in those spaces, provide them the necessary outlets, resources, you know, keep their computers charged all day, but at the same time, we want to give them exterior rooms with light and still have access to the Innovation Center to spread out.
Mr. Preble, will you walk us through what the typical day might look like when they come in and then also in their learning environments?
Sure, so at each, at each campus, we have a central location for students that have to enter. On the West Oak campus, we're utilizing the middle school main entrance. So in the pictures you see here, these are students coming in, whether they're getting dropped off by car or by the bus, we have a temperature check kiosk there, also recognizes if you're wearing your mask, just kind of lets you know that your temperature's normal. If you're not wearing your mask, it lets you know that too, it's pretty cool. But then what we do from there is we go into a routine where kids will go in and depending on what time they arrive at school, if they have time, we have enough space in the lunchroom that they'll go straight through the lobby into the lunchroom, pick up breakfast. They, if there's time, they'll eat it there, otherwise they'll take it into their classroom with them and they can have their breakfast in there so they can get logged on to their team meetings and so forth. And then once we go through the day and we go to lunch, we have a routine for going back into the cafeteria, spacing students out. Currently, we have a schedule where we have different lunch schedules for the middle school, we have one lunch schedule for the intermediate school and we have enough tables that, I believe my intermediate school group is the biggest group to go into lunch. We can put one kid at, at each table, but you can see here, we have arrows on the floor, distance out. A great shot here where they're picking up their, their food and they're actually coming in for breakfast in this picture here, so their, their social distance mask on, spacing up, they pick up their breakfast and they go back to their room. And then we will facilitate, you know, mask breaks throughout the day typically when they're doing their asynchronous work. Otherwise their masks are on. And then we have, we have utilized our outdoor spaces for mask breaks, we have access to the gym if we'd like. What you see here on this slide is just a, a picture of what some of our rooms look like. The top two pictures, I believe, are over Diamond Lake. The bottom right-hand corner is the actual intermediate classroom, so we have 10 students and they're all spaced out, as you can see, facing the same direction. That particular classroom has outside door access, so we can go outside that way for a mask break. We can go back in toward the Innovation Center, we have quick access to one of the main washrooms, quick access to the lunchroom, quick access to the lobby. And then the lower left, just an example of what we have for staff and students in each of our innovation, or excuse me, innovation, our facilitated distance learning classrooms, we have kits in there with adult masks, student masks, we have face shields if needed. And we have pack of wipes and bottle sanitizer, so we're cleaning the spaces throughout the day and at the end of the day as well.
Mr. Rogers, do you want to add anything about food service? I know Mr. Preble mentioned it and kind of walked us through that, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I appreciate that, the only thing I'll mention is that we were still doing our, our pickup program for any students that are doing remote learning and that's taking place at the same time that normal lunch periods are taking place. We have it open from 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. Monday through Friday, so pickup is daily. So we're happy that the first day we had 49 people pick up, which is quadruple pretty much what we've had throughout the last part of the summer, we may have only had 10 to 15 kids picking up. So we're really happy, we've gotten some good feedback based on the meals the first two days. And yesterday, we just had announced that the Illinois State Board of Ed is continuing the Seamless Summer Program, which means schools get a higher rate of reimbursement for each of their meals and allows us to provide free breakfast and lunch to students throughout the year.
Great, and so as we, as I shared earlier, we're in, only in day two and it's been working out real well as far as students coming in, being able to keep students safe as well as staff safe and socially distanced and keeping our spaces cleaned and sanitized. We're going to kind of monitor this for two, you know, two weeks, see how it goes, what are some of our strengths, what are some areas that need to be improved upon? And then as teachers and principals and our community liaison continue to work with our families, if there are more families that may need, may need some facilitation or supervision and coming into our school because it's a better environment for them to get access to resources or just have supervision for engagement or participation, then we'll add more students if needed. So right now, we just want to see how the first two weeks go, build upon our strengths and then improve the areas that we need to improve upon, see how our food service goes and then expand the program as needed. And that's just an opportunity for you all to ask us any questions or, or comments from the board. Thank you, Mr. Preble and Mr. Rogers.
I, I have a couple of questions, but before that, excellent, I think you guys are doing an incredible job and being able to offer this level of flexibility, it's, it can only be a plus for our community. You, you touched on something, the, the process for expanding the programming in the event that we have parents that after one week, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, whatever time scale is, that there's a process in place that they can then release, enter into, to have their child added to the DLA program. Can you review what that would be in the event that a parent, after, you know, two weeks or three weeks, they decide that they, they want their child to be part of this program?
Well, I think one of the things that, the facility, first of all, the application is still on our website, so if a need comes up or if a situation changes, they can always contact one of their principals or social workers or teachers and let them, let us know. We're gonna have regular contact with families and with daily contact with students. So, and that's gonna be part of Daisy's role too, is she's created a forum that is gonna go out to staff later this week that if they do notice that there is a specific need or a concern or a support or resource that a family might need, we'll be able to provide that. So if, if it's additional childcare or supervision or just engagement that they're not able to engage or connect at home, then we'll be able to invite them in for this. So I think it's just mostly going to be through the communication with staff as well as with principals and then we'll just kind of work together on how many we can accommodate according to how many staff we have here to supervise. So it'll just be ongoing, it'll be fluid and it'll be open, but if there is something, you know, outside of that, if a family's personal situation might change, that application is always open or they can reach out to their teacher or to their principal and ask for that.
Okay, thanks, we talked about 32 students currently in, as part of the roster, right? Thirty, we're at 32 as of yesterday, okay. What's the breakdown by grades, by grade level? Can you, can you elaborate on that or is that, and how are you gonna manage that?
You know, I don't have that in front of me, do, one of the principals, Mr. Rogers, do you have that spreadsheet in front of you?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can definitely give you the breakdown if you'd like it.
Yeah, if.
Sure, the breakdown will be good to know, but more importantly, if you would mind just taking us through how in your school you're going to manage, let's say you have a couple of kids that are in one grade, two or three, in another grade, four, and another grade. How are you gonna manage that?
Well, in the intermediate classroom right now, we have one fifth grade student, two fourth grade students, and the remainder are third grade students. So what we do is, you can see in the one picture how we had them spaced out, that picture was actually taken yesterday and it was kind of, we, we put everybody in there in alphabetical order just for ease of, you know, organizing as we transitioned to the building. But we found that it doesn't make a whole lot of sense when you have several of them that are in the same Google Classroom and meet. So we kind of, we, we put them in the same vicinity, they're not together, obviously, they're still spaced out. So we, we organize them so that when our learning associates are working in there, even if I'm in there, the, we're able to assist with those grade levels in, in chunks of the classroom because they're on the same schedule at the same time for the most part, so they're either, you know, third grade is for the most part gonna be synchronous at the same time, asynchronous at the same time, and then fourth grade will be maybe at another time. But because they're, they're kind of grouped in a similar area of the classroom, and mind you, the classroom isn't this gigantic space, it's a nice sized classroom, plenty of room for 10 kids, but we just felt it was easier to organize that way. We have individual materials for students, you know, a lot of, the students brought materials of their own and if they didn't have them, we supplied them for them, but then we supplied bins and bags so that they keep their own materials at their space for the entire day, we'll replenish them as needed. And then basically when we go to, to go to lunch, that's in alphabetical order, which is easier that way to manage it and assign seats that way. The bus routes are, the seats are assigned on there and they're assigned by stop, so we will load from, you know, back to front with when they're going home. The person closer to the front of the bus is the first stop and so on, so it's, it's organized in that manner, that's how we're keeping the social distance going. And the rotation through the building itself is in a, in a bit of a circular pattern, if you can imagine, so that we're, we're keeping one-way traffic as much as possible.
Thanks, that helps to understand, is that the same approach with the other schools? For.
About Diamond Lake.
I can't see him on my screen, so I just wanted to, let me flip over. Dr. Fredericks and Mr. Cunningham, do you want to respond specifically about your schools, if it's similar or not?
Yeah, it is very similar, we're taking, the three principals work together, so we try to go through all of these details so that we are following the same procedures and making sure everybody is where they need to be and getting there safely.
Middle school, same idea, we're looking at three sixth grade, three seventh, three eighth. And with the middle school run, we're running three slightly different schedules by each grade level, but the advantage of the space is that we have extra rooms that students can do their practicing for band, choir. We have outdoor spaces as well and our learning associates are able to facilitate that, so students can openly interact with their peers, whether it's in the classroom or otherwise and without being disturbed and then they can do it all safely and through social distancing.
That we are keeping most of the students in the learning center with the exception of the kindergarten students are in the maker space so that we have a, an area for them that are, is a little bit more tailored to their unique learning needs.
Yeah, the benefit right now based on our staffing levels and then the student count is, you know, we have a lot of staff to student ratios for each of our schools. So it allows to break, you know, have breakout spaces and breakout areas for the students in case the, the learning associates need to do that. So each of our main spaces are surrounded by little breakout areas to do some more small group activity should they need to do that. And so we have appropriate supervision for that.
Thanks so much, it helps to understand and it's obviously a very comprehensive approach, so thank you again.
Thank you, are there any other questions?
I just had one quick question and I, I think you might have addressed this, but I just wanted to clarify. So were we able to accommodate all of the students that asked for the facilitated distance learning?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Is there before care and after care offered at this point or do you foresee offering those in the future?
Yeah, right now, we don't have before and after school option offered just because the enrollment's not high enough. So Innovation Learning's always been our, our traditional partner for before and after school care. We did discuss potentially offering a facilitated remote learning option partnering with them should our enrollment counts rise. So should the, should the enrollments go up, we allow more students to come in here where we need to partner with Innovation Learning, we'll definitely offer the before and after school care again.
Are there any other questions? Again, thank you for the board for allowing this to happen and being open-minded for us to be able to support our families who require this, need this, and our staff who are coming in to help, support, and supervise. So thank you very much, Mr. Preble, Mr. Rogers, for your help on the presentation. Our second presentation of the evening, if I can ask Mr. Hanson to please share his screen again, is our Goals and Priority End of the Year Update and we are about three months past due, we've been a little busy, as you all know, going on this journey with us of redesigning our schools and opening up remotely, but this is usually an annual presentation that we do in June as we wrap up the school year of what our goals and priorities are for the school year prior. And so I know that the board had asked last year and gave me some feedback as well as the district leadership team if we could, if you could have some more quantitative data to kind of measure each of the targets that we had set out. So if I can ask Mr. Hanson to go to slide two, please. As you see that, you know, all of the acronyms are still the same as far as district leadership teams and, you know, all the teams that we've had. We kind of transitioned out of the new beginnings committee, but we did use them as far in beginning of the year of trans- We kind of transitioned out of the new beginnings committee, but we did use them as far in the beginning of the year of transitioning, going from three schools to, or three campuses to two. But what we did differently this year is to, is because some of our goal areas or targets, it's not that we didn't accomplish them, but they're still going to be ongoing just because of the fact that we did have to end and go remote starting on March sixteenth. So we've highlighted each of the outcomes in blue if they're ongoing and green if the items have been completed. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Geraco, who is going to review and talk about goal area one. And then we're going to kind of share goal areas two and three. And then Mr. Rogers will do four and Mr. Hanson will do five, and then I'll come back to close things off. And then we'll take questions, please, throughout the presentations and also at the end. So, Mr. Geraco, please go ahead.
All right, sounds good. So our first goal area was academic excellence and has been for several years. Our first target was to ensure a guaranteed and viable curriculum. This is part of the curriculum cycle. We have specific goals each and every year. Last year, our goal was to develop a Spanish language arts learning framework with the end of the school year being remote. Our learning frameworks will be developed this fall. The dual-language teachers did a great job this summer of working on their curricular roadmaps. We had a couple of employees shift grade levels in K through two in the dual program. So it was actually a great opportunity for those teachers to dig in into their K through two, correct, into their K through two curricula and then begin to devise their learning frameworks this fall. We did complete the math standards-based report card. With a whole lot of new right now, we're going to kind of put the implementation on hold with the notion that we're going to complete the ELA standard-based report card this school year for full implementation in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Our, the development of our Communication Arts Program in grade six will be ongoing this year. And as Dr. Sharma Lewis had mentioned, we included a student growth data metric there which reflects our fall-to-winter star assessments. We won't click on that, but generally speaking, what it includes is the, the student growth percentile between grades three through eight, which is roughly between fifty and fifty, the fiftieth and sixtieth student growth percentile, which is correlates very similarly to our Illinois Assessment of Readiness. So generally speaking, on par. The second target relates to the development of our student learning objectives. So our principals and our professional learning teams will continue their work this year. This is going to be an ongoing goal where they are developing their student learning objectives throughout each of the content areas and each of their units. As I mentioned, this will be an ongoing goal through, throughout this school year and quite honestly, probably the next. The third target is, was to review and refine our portrait of a graduate. So as you'll see, that's included in this presentation as well. The DLT Professional Advisory Committee had worked together to update the portrait of a graduate. And that is well, well-presented on our district website and also within this presentation. Mr. Senior Hanson, the next, next slide. The next slide, excuse me, the next goal is professional excellence. The first target was to foster and strengthen a positive and responsive professional working environment. And really, what we, what we've done over the last several years is develop a strong sense of professional learning community or our, what we call our professional learning teams. Those professional learning teams are the heart of our collaboration, our teamwork, our action planning. We utilize those professional learning teams and we've set up structures and protocols within those professional learning teams and standard operating procedures to ensure that teachers and the members of the administration are working together in a cooperative, cooperative manner that gives teachers an opportunity for, as I had mentioned, sort of shared purpose and ownership and also opportunities for teacher leadership. The nineteen-twenty Staff Culture and Climate Survey, I think, really speaks volumes to the fact that we have strong engagement in our school district, which if you take a moment to look at that, those surveys really speaks to the heart of the fact that we've got a very strong collaborative culture. We have a culture of shared ownership. That survey points to that we have a very supportive and working environment. It points to the fact that we have strong leadership and we are steeped in communication, trust, and respect. Over to you, Dr. Sharma Lewis.
Thanks. And I just wanted to also comment. I know the board had asked us to, you know, like I said, quantify the data, so that's why all of the links have been included in there. Everything that's underlined is a live link. These have also been shared with you throughout the, throughout last year. The surveys, the portrait of a graduate, the student growth data, so all of these things have been shared with you. We just wanted to kind of put everything together in one spot so you can see how they matched up and aligned with each of our targets and what was completed and what we achieved in each of the goal areas. So our second target in professional excellence, again, with the board's support, was to align district-wide procedures for the special education programs and continuum of all services. And so in August, I know that Dr. Fredericks led a retreat to review all procedures and processes with special ed going through and sitting down with all of our special ed staff-related services as well as our district leadership team, sitting down by building and reviewing the processes, reviewing the IEPs and making sure that we were consistent with how we were looking at IPs, writing IPs, and then also executing the parent meetings. And then from there, we built upon that and had a outside consultant come and do the special ed audit starting in October through December, and that was shared with you in December. And from that, Dr. Powell gave us a lot of great recommendations on what we should and could be doing to strengthen our special services program. The district and the staff also participated in professional development trainings and legal updates and process and procedures and goal writings with Dr. Powell. From January, February, and part of March, we had things scheduled. You know, obviously, March through eight, March through June, that wasn't able to be completed, but we're going to have her come back this year. And Blake is working with her as far as how do we kind of continue that and grow in those areas. So she's going to continue to be a support, not only for Mr. Dole, but also for our staff and our paraprofessionals on continuing professional development. And then things that we have ongoing is through the audit and through looking at our process and procedures and what we needed to do to strengthen department is to reorganize that and separate the duties of principal and special ed coordinator and create our own special services coordinator, which was the, you know, the hiring of Mr. Dole and also just the creating of his job description. So I know he's doing a great job of just going through that audit, implementing some of the suggestions, building upon the strengths we already have, and then looking at areas of growth and building upon that about strengthening his team. So that came all out of the audit. And a lot of those things, as you can see, three out of those four outcomes have been achieved. And then review and refine the portrait of a grad, excuse me, a portrait of a professional. We did that again with our Professional Advisory Council, looked at the skills and the strategies that we need to be current and relevant in our professional practice, and we updated the portrait of a professional, diamond professional. So that's also there for your review. Mr. Hanson, perfect. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Rock, and then I'll finish up.
All right. Then our third goal is operational excellence. I'll cover target one, which is to utilize common professional learning time for all staff in a collaborative, productive, and efficient manner. We, we continuously, as I had mentioned before, we utilize our professional learning teams to coordinate our late start staff meetings, grade level team meetings, and content team meetings. We ensure that we have strong agenda-driven meetings. We have developed over the last several years, strong structures, protocols, standard operating procedures that we utilize with our teacher leaders. And so each of the teacher leaders is charged with ensuring, and our, and administrative team is charged with ensuring that all of those professional learning times are used efficiently and effectively. Dr. Sharma Lewis?
So our target, excuse me, target number two and goal area three is develop a process to create a five-year district strategic plan. And I know that we haven't quite gotten to this point of developing the actual plan, that these goals are annual and that we review them. But we've been working on these specific goals, these specific targets and the outcomes for the past five years. So we're starting year six, kind of staying in the same goals, but maybe looking at long-term endpoints. And we'll do that, I think, when we kind of get a little bit back to in-person teaching and learning as well as with our board meetings. But the board did participate in a leadership retreat earlier this year to establish a focus, vision, and goals, as well as the DLT has established a hundred-day calendar. So once we establish our goals for this year, then we'll put together a hundred-day progress monitoring schedule so that we will take the day and just kind of look at how we're doing on each one of our goal areas and our targets and making sure that we're achieving and accomplishing those strategies and that we have what we have in place with the resources and the support. So we'll be doing that ongoing for this year as well. And then also support all stakeholder with district transition. As you remember, it seems so long ago, but at the beginning of last year, we were moving, we closed down Fairhaven Campus and moved to Diamond Lake as well as divided West Oak Campus into two separate schools. And so it was really important for us, as well as working with the new beginnings committee, to make sure that staff had all the resources and supports in place to be successful throughout the transition and with their move. So we implemented the staff support and success survey that was implemented, I believe, at late September, early October last year, and then we implemented it again in February, March, just to make sure that they had items that they needed, the support to be successful in teaching and learning at the beginning through the transition, as well as with possibly a new principal and possibly new grade level and teams. So as you can see, the results are very positive for each of our schools. We had broken that down for you. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rogers, who will talk about financial excellence.
Thank you. So for goal four, financial excellence, our first target has been a, an ongoing target for the, for last few years is to plan and budget our five-year facility project. So the district, in the last several years, has not had a dedicated five-year facility plan that identified at-need projects, facility components that may be at risk if it's not addressed in the last few years. So we worked hard on establishing the five-year facility plan. It was presented at a board meeting a few months ago. You can see it in the link attached there. So we've been able to accomplish a lot of the projects with our referendum work. And we just finished a big project this summer. We re-roofed most of the West Oak Campus roof, so protected all of our new investment that we made last summer. And that project was part of new debt certificates that were issued last year. So we've identified some future projects of the last few years that are going to be addressed with either those debt certificates or some local fund balance reserves that we have. And as always, we're going to be evaluating new projects as they come about. One of the biggest things that have came with the COVID pandemic has been recycling air, ventilation units, all of our rooftop components that circulate the air in our building. So we're working with an architect firm on establishing a ten-year life safety survey. So it's really, we have an existing life safety survey on the books, but this is going to be re-establishing it based on some of these new projects that we'd like to see. So the district's got about three, I'm sorry, got about six hundred thousand dollars in reserves that have to be spent on approved life safety projects by the state. So we're working on, on that and plan on renovating some of the existing mechanicals at Diamond Lake that have been outdated. The second target is to support, support and implement this new District Seventy-Six Lunch Program in partnership with Quests and District Thirty. So the year's had its ups and downs as we've got this program off the ground. There's been a lot of staffing considerations we've had to take into account. We've had to try a lot of new foods and get student feedback on it. So the, the link has got a, a survey that we did with students right around January. Just surveyed the middle school students and got a lot of good data points as far as what students like, what they don't like, what they like to see differently. So our biggest goals were going, rounding into year two of the partnership is just to nurture that relationship, gain the trust of the students as we've transitioned from a food service vendor that we've had for many years that didn't, it wasn't as favorable with students. So we're really excited to get into year two and gather more feedback. Unfortunately, with school closure, we're able to finalize the loop on, you know, getting more feedback from West Oak Campus as a whole. We look forward to that, and we're going to be really trying out a lot of new food here, especially in both the facilitated program and the remote pickup that students are going to do. So we're excited for that partnership to continue. Goal three is an ongoing goal. It's to modernize our human resources platform. We've started this migration. It's going to be a large-scale swing for the business office that's going to be able to provide a lot of new reporting and internal controls that we're excited about. So I look forward to showing the board that as we fully do this transition here. We're hoping to complete it this summer. But as with the pandemic, some things have got pushed back, so we're hoping to finalize this migration in October, November. So I'll be providing more updates during this upcoming fiscal year. And last was really just to ensure a smooth transition with our new facility department. We've been very lucky to bring on two maintenance technicians that are very high, highly qualified, very motivated with high managerial skills. So Chris Debido has taken lead as our lead facilities engineer. And we've established a transition schedule for taking on some of the responsibilities that both fall into my plate, that were on Mr. Preble's plate. So there's this calendar attached there that'll detail the transition for him to become a certified plant property manager. It's an IASBO certified program that is going to really establish the district is having a facility engineer that's, that's sponsored by the Illinois Association of School Business Officials. And I think it's going to look really well for our department once we complete that program. So you get to the transition schedule attached. And then the last thing I'll just point out is the district is going through its annual audit this week. We've got some preliminary numbers back. I know it's not part of the goal, but I just wanted to say that we're projecting about an eight-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-dollar surplus in the operating funds for this last fiscal year. So we're really excited that we were able to maintain some fiscal responsibility and build their surpluses up. Because as we're going through some more of these unknowns coming up here, it's going to be important that we do have a strong fund balance. And we've been excited to continue that trend.
So goal five, excellence communication. Our first target was empower student voice and increase ownership in their learning. If you look at this, all these areas are in blue because they're ongoing. The first part, I wanted to emphasize that student presenting yearly during student-led conferences clearly was, had to be postponed due to the pandemic and having to be remote for the duration of the rest of the school year last year. Even though we did do parent-teacher conferences, they were not student-led, but our students were prepared to move forward to student-led conferences, and it is going to be ongoing as we lead it, as we move forward with the school year and seeing what it looks like as we progress for student-led conferences. Digital student target portfolios were practiced, were created, were set and ready to go for the upcoming student-like conferences. But just like that, we had to postpone utilizing them in tandem when it came to student-led conferences. So students do have target portfolios from last year, they're digital, and it would be something that is going to be ongoing. But students were creating and taking ownership in their learning by utilizing these digital target portfolios as well. And as every year are, but especially, you know, the, the past year, student leadership, working in tandem with school, stakeholders for events, planning and communication, our NJHS, Student Council, Student Broadcast Club, and as well as additional student-led leaderships that are, were implementing at all three schools, continue to strive and empower and student voice and leadership in the buildings. Or is going to be continually an ongoing prob, process, especially even more so during remote learning. Target two, encourage and support our professional online presence, continuous communications of events, experiences via publications, web presence, social media organizations. These are areas that's always going to be ongoing. It's one area that when it comes to communication, it's not something that is one and done, but it's something that's always going to be communicated, especially not, not only sharing stories, as I say, our district story, but also being, ensuring that not only communications, but there are opportunities for events that are now, especially in the past, in person, but now virtual, they're continuously going to happen. So it's going, it's going to stay blue as ongoing. In addition, we added the D seventy-six Family Communication Survey data that was there. In addition, we added the D76 Family Communication Survey data that was there, that was presented last school year that, that has been completed and that was illustrating our families' perspectives on how they want to be communicated, either via, you know, how we communicate in person, virtual, through school messenger, email, text, phone calls, many different ways we communicated and utilizing that quantitative data to ensure that we are communicating effectively with our families. So, even though that's, that, so that, that target has been completed. And then last, increase parental involvement in partnership and special education process. Last year, implementing the IEP feedback form after every meeting was implemented and completed. So, that, that information is still utilized. That is a form that was implemented just to get some feedback based off of the IEP process. And the last area is the Parent Engagement Survey, which is something we provided last year that we sought out information and feedback from our families based off of, is this a welcoming environment, informed in my learning, needs and resources, involvement and safety and overall satisfaction. So, that survey has been implemented last year and gave us baseline data and feedback on how we were doing over the course of the school year.
So, in closing is also looking ahead. I mean, I think our continued focus and priorities, especially as we return to school in a new way, is having a healthy physically and emotionally culture and climate, not only for students, but also maintaining that for our staff as, you know, we outline in professional excellence goal two. Making sure that our teaching and learning standards are relevant and they're current, knowing that also that their instructional practices are rigorous, especially in a remote learning environment, making sure that, you know, that we follow the ISB guidelines, but that also that we fill in the gaps that we may have been missing that we, from last year as well as to this year, making sure our programs are robust and that there's a sense of accountability with participation, with engagement, with attendance from students, as well as effective and ongoing professional development. We have an opportunity to have five early release days from now until December, as well as two institute days that we'll be taking advantage of. So, we're making sure that, that there is effective professional development and ongoing professional development, not only for our certified staff, but also for our peer professionals, especially in the area, as I mentioned earlier, of Dr. Powell working with Mr. Dole in special services. We want to make sure that all of our staff know our students, as well as, you know, our principals and our teachers are working together to have strong social, emotional supports and connections with our students and their families, making sure that we have ongoing and consistent communication, especially in a remote environment, making sure that we always stay connected and that, you know, tonight was a great example where Mr. Hanson gave a parent technology night and shared about ways that, you know, you can communicate, ask questions. If you're having trouble, how to troubleshoot, how to reach out to teachers, how to reach out to principals. So, it was just a way to support that communication piece, not just one-way communication coming from the school, but how do we, you know, engage families to reach back out to us? As well as having, again, family and parent education resources. So, tonight was another great example of that. We're going to continue those throughout the year and throughout, throughout remote learning for sure. Having safe and sanitized facilities, especially for our students who are in person and as we welcome more and more students back in person and staff back in person, making our decisions based on data, objective data, whether that's student growth data or whether it's staff and parent community survey data, but just looking at that, evaluating, you know, what pros, cons, strengths, weaknesses are and how we can make our programs stronger. You know, as Mr. Rogers pointed out, the $863,000 surplus, I'd like to point out again and emphasize, but continue to make fiscally responsible decisions and practices. And then, you know, with the addition of our community liaison, truly enhance and strengthen our community support and outreach and making sure that our students and families who need those additional resources and support have those and have access to those and that we're able to provide those for them. So, again, I want to thank my amazing team for all the great outcomes that we've, were able to achieve. And I'm, you know, I apologize that this presentation is a couple of months late, but as you can see, we've worked hard and even despite, you know, the ending that we had, we were still able to kind of plug ahead and accomplish almost, you know, 85% of what we set out to do and that many of our goals continue to be ongoing and we're going to stay focused on those. So, thank you, team, and thank you, board, for your continued support in all that we do. This is an opportunity for any questions or comments.
Dr. Dragga, can I ask you to kind of walk us through that student growth data under the first goal?
Sure. Let me show it. Do you, you want that link opened up?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So, this, this data point includes third grade, fifth grade and eighth grade reading and math student growth percentile. Typically, what we would share, or what I would share with you at the end of the year is the fall to spring student growth data. This data, however, includes the fall to winter. And so, it includes, like I said, typically what we would consider our benchmark grades of grades three, five and eight in terms of this. Our third grade students in reading in comparison to those students nationwide in third grade grew at approximately, approximately the 52nd percentile, meaning slightly above average. STAR would tell us that the norm is between the 35th and the 65th student growth percentile. And as you can see, we're in most categories slightly above the 50th percentile. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I think the graph alone, I think, doesn't give us all the context maybe that is needed. Especially since I know that last year, due to the pandemic, we had less data available. So, I wasn't sure exactly what measurement this was showing and then also what it was being measured against in terms of, you know, like if it was a national norm or not.
Yeah, yeah. Great question. And so, what we will do for this fall, once we get through September, we're going to do a remote assessment utilizing STAR. And so, we'll be able to continue to track our student data in terms of both their raw scale scores, meaning where they are, and then also their comparisons in terms of the national norms. And then we'll continue, hopefully, when we return in person in January, we'll do our winter benchmark assessment. And then hopefully, we'll conclude in the spring in person with our, with our benchmark there.
Great. Thank you.
Pleasure.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, if there's no more questions, again, thank you, team. Thank you, Board of Education. It was a great year and we're going to be revisiting our goals again later this month, working with our Professional Advisory Council and see what targets and strategies we need to put in place to address our goal areas. And then we'll update you in October. So, thank you. And that's all the presentations for this evening.
Okay, fantastic. Then we will move on to our business agenda. And we have a couple of items for action on tonight's agenda. The first item is not for action. It's just a review of the omnibus vote agenda. And we will be voting on that at our next meeting on September 15. And the second item is for action tonight. It's the approval of the press 105 policies. I know we briefly discussed them or mentioned them last week. Did anyone have any questions or want to bring up any points of discussion for those before we go ahead with that action item? Is that it? Everyone's on mute, so I can't, I can't tell. Shake your head. Yes, no, no? Okay, good. Okay. Okay, then I'm going to read it out loud and then we will take a vote. And as usual, it's long. Whereas policy creation and updates and changes to adopted policies are provided for District 76 through the subscription to Policy Reference Educational Subscription Service, Press, from the Illinois Association of School Awards, IASB. And whereas the policy committee reviewed the policies and a first reading of the policies was held at the August 25, 2020 Board Business Meeting. Therefore, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education moves to approve the policy changes as presented and reviewed in IASB Press Issue 105. 20:1, or I'm sorry, 2:150-AP Superintendent Committees, 2:250-E2 Immediately Available District Public Records and Web Posted Reports and Records, 2:260 Uniform Grievance Procedure, 2:260-AP1 Guidelines for Investigated Complaints Filed Under Policy 2:260 Uniform Grievance Procedure and Allegations of Misconduct, 2:260-AP2 Non-Discrimination Coordinator and Complaint Manager, 2:265 Title IX Sexual Harassment Grievance Procedure, 2:265-AP1 Title IX Sexual Harassment Response, 2:265-AP2 Formal Title IX Sexual Harassment Complaint Grievance Procedure, 2:265-E Title IX Sexual Harassment Glossary of Terms, 4:180-AP1 School Action Steps for Pandemic Influenza or Other Virus/Disease, 4:180-AP2 Pandemic Influenza Surveillance and Reporting, 5:10 Equal Employment Opportunity in Minority Recruitment, 5:20 Workplace Harassment Prohibited, 5:90-AP Coordination with Children's Advocacy Center, 5:100 Staff Development Program, 5:200 Terms and Conditions of Employment and Dismissal, 5:220 Substitute Teachers, 5:330 Sick Days, Vacation, Holidays and Leaves, 7:10 Equal Educational Opportunities, 7:10-AP1 Accommodating Transgender Students or Gender Non-Conforming Students, 7:20 Harassment of Students Prohibited, 7:20-AP Harassment of Students Prohibited, 7:180 Prevention of and Response to Bullying, Intimidation and Harassment, 7:185 Teen Dating Violence Prohibited, 7:190-E2 Student Handbook Checklist, 7:345-AP Use of Educational Technologies, Student Data Privacy and Security. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Lozada.
Yes.
Hauptman.
Yes.
Armenta.
Hale.
Yes.
Candela.
Yes.
Juan. Yes. Sullivan. Sullivan.
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Moving on to item C on the business agenda, which is personnel. We have one item for action there. And be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel item as depicted on the agenda. We have one new hire. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Hauptman.
Yes.
Lozada.
Yes.
Armenta.
Hale.
Yes.
Candela.
Yes.
Juan. Yes. Sullivan.
Yes.
Okay. That concludes our business agenda for this evening. Now, we will move on to board discussions. Do we have any items for board discussion? I don't think so. No? Okay. Moving on to freedom of informational costs, we have none. Notices and communications, there are a number of them.
So, as always, we have our approved board meeting calendar, just for your reference and review. And then we added, which came out last night, which was the Diamond Edge Newsletter, which talks, introduces all of our new staff members, as well as just our back-to-school events that we held. And then for your review, which are also on our website, but we just thought you'd like to see are just each team's grade level presentation or department presentation that they shared at their meet and greets last Friday. So, it's just, it's more for your review.
Those are really well done. And very engaging for the kids. So, thank you to our teachers and everyone who put them together.
Great.
Okay. And we now will move on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening on non-agenda items? And again, if you do have a comment, you can please take that into the Q and A box. I don't, I don't see any. Eric, you want to just verify for me?
Yep. There are no comments at this moment.
Okay. Then we will move on to others.
So, I just wanted to include one item. One's a detachment and then one's just an update. The first day of attendance, and we're going to continue to monitor this daily, as well as looking for ways to monitor engagement, participation with each student in each grade level and each class. So, this was just yesterday's numbers and I know that, you know, they're starkly different, which with a great improvement from last spring. So, we're at over 90% in each one of our schools. And like I said, we're going to continue to monitor it daily, but I just wanted the board to know that this is a priority and will continue to be a priority, as well as participation and engagement as we go through remote learning and continually to utilize our community liaison and keep her informed at the school and grade level, should any additional resources or support be needed.
Great.
And then the second item, I just wanted to add, it's not listed, but I was talking to Mrs. Hale and we think it would be a good idea if every, if it's okay with the board to change. Our, our next meeting is in two weeks on September 15. And we've been invited by Fairhaven to do a open house and tour, which I believe most of you are attending at 6:00 PM. And then in order to give everybody enough time to get back to their homes to participate in the budget hearing first and then the board meeting, we're hoping to change the start of the budget hearing to 7:15 PM. And then the board meeting will follow immediately after at 7:20. So, it just pushes it back 15 minutes, if that's okay with everybody. Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Great. Then we'll notify the public and make note of that for the next agenda. And that is all I have. Oh, may I just, I know I, I did show this earlier, but Mr. Hanson and the teachers that participated in the panel for tonight's first technology parent presentation was excellent. I thought it was a great overview of some of the basics on how to get started, as well as where to go if you have questions or trouble. And also, it just opened up the dialogue of just the student help desk and the fact that, who Mr. Hanson is and just, you know, how to respond to questions from teachers and also from principals. So, great job, Mr. Hanson. Thank you for coordinating and implementing that. And that'll happen every two weeks, I believe, from now until we have remote learning. So, great job.
Thank you. Thank you for offering those too, because I know that not a lot of districts are doing that. And I think it's really important to make sure that, you know, parents and the students feel comfortable with what they're doing.
Absolutely. And support our families.
That's great. I had two things for others. First, I don't know if you guys saw, we got an email from IASB today. They have a number of online seminars for board members. One is about English learners for board members. What essentially it's, the title is what board members need to know about English learners. It's online. It's free. It's on September 10. So, I just wanted to make you guys aware of that in case you're able to attend. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up is the April 6 consolidated election, because we will have, I believe, three board seats up for election April 6. And I know that seems very far away, but you actually, if you were going to run for one of those seats, and I believe those seats that are open are John Hauptman, John Armenta and Nikki's seat. But they would all be for a four-year term. You can start circulating your petition September 22. So, that's actually, you know, almost right around the corner. And then those petitions get filed beginning December 14. So, you have a week to do that. So, I just wanted to get that on everyone's radar. IASB is doing a seminar on that, because obviously it is going to be a little bit more challenging with the petitions during COVID. And so, that is also a free seminar on September 17, if you're interested. And like I said, I just wanted to kind of get that on everyone's radar because it is coming up sooner rather than later. So that is all I had for others. Did anyone else have anything? Okay, I'm going to take silence as a no. Then we can move to adjourn the meeting. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Luzada.
Yes.
Candela.
Yes.
Armenta.
Hale.
Yes.
Hauptman.
Yes.
Juan. Yes. Sullivan.
Thank you, everyone. We will see you all on the 15th with most of you at Fairhaven.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay well.